Just letting you know.
All right, good evening. Let's go ahead and get started. Turn with me if you would in your hymn books. The number one hundred ninety-eight, one hundred ninety-eight. There is power in the blood. When you find it, go ahead and stand. We'll sing all four verses, one hundred ninety-eight. Would you be free from the burden of sin? There's power in the blood, power in the blood. Would you, or evil, a victory win? There's wonderful power in the blood. There is power, power, wonder-working art in the blood of a lamb. There is power, power, wonder-working art in the precious blood of a lamb. Would you be free from your passion and pride? There's power in the blood, power in the blood. Come for a cleansing to Calvary's side. There's wonderful power in the blood. There is power, power, wonder-working art in the blood of a lamb. There is power, power, wonder-working art in the precious blood of a lamb. Would you be whiter, much whiter than snow? There's power in the blood, power in the blood. Sinstings are lost in its life-giving flow. There's wonderful power in the blood. There is power, power, wonder-working art in the blood of a lamb. There is power, power, wonder-working art in the precious blood of a lamb. Would you do service for Jesus, for King? There's power in the blood, power in the blood. Would you live daily as praises to sing? There's wonderful power in the blood. There is power, power, wonder-working art in the blood of a lamb. There is power, power, wonder-working art in the precious blood of a lamb. Thank you. You can be seated. Just a couple of announcements. Tomorrow afternoon, one forty-five, Mrs. Sharon Wilkerson will be having surgery on her rib and collarbone, correct? She had fallen last week, and things were not setting properly, so please be in prayer for her. She needs to have surgery tomorrow at one forty-five. Also, a couple of dates coming up to pray about. Please be in prayer for myself. I'll be in Mexico. I leave in the night Sunday, and will be gone for six days, seven days, getting back early in the morning. Following Sunday morning, I appreciate your prayers as I travel down to be with the Wheelers. Jerkbergs will be coming next week. Originally had been scheduled to be here on Tuesday. They are feeling the pressure of getting ready to move to another continent with all the kids and everything of that nature, so they will be arriving on Wednesday, not Tuesday. They'll be arriving on Wednesday of next week, and then departing for Madagascar on Thursday. So they'll be arriving here Wednesday. We put them up in a hotel, and then they'll be off to the airport on Thursday the tenth. Jonathan Nanda will leave the sixteenth, two weeks from today, and will be headed back to Brazil with their family. And be in prayer for them as they're getting down to the last details of packing up to go back to Brazil. Two hundred eight, if you would in your hymn books, two hundred eight before the special music. Are you washed in the blood? Have you been to Jesus for the cleansing rock? Are you washed in the blood of a lamb? Are you fully trusting in his grace's ark? Are you washed in the blood of a lamb? Are you washed in the blood? In the soul-cleansing blood of a lamb? Are your garments spotless, are they white as snow? Are you washed in the blood of a lamb? Are you walking, baby, when the Savior's son? Are you washed in the blood of a lamb? Do your rest each night in the crucified? Are you washed in the blood of a lamb? Are you washed in the blood? In the soul-cleansing blood of a lamb? Are your garments spotless, are they white as snow? Are you washed in the blood of a lamb? When the bright moon comes, will your robes be white? Are you washed in the blood of a lamb? Will your soul be ready for the mansion's fright? And be washed in the blood of a lamb? Are you washed in the blood? In the soul-cleansing blood of a lamb? Are your garments spotless, are they white as snow? Are you washed in the blood of a lamb? Lay aside the garments that are stained with sin? And be washed in the blood of a lamb? There's a fountain flowing for the soul unclean? Or be washed in the blood of a lamb? Are you washed in the blood? In the soul-cleansing blood of a lamb? Are your garments spotless, are they white as snow? Are you washed in the blood of a lamb? We're blessed to have this day of ladies here tonight. I think they have some specials for us.
Come to the Savior. Turn your eyes upon him. He wants to give you life without death. Mercy he offers you, borned from thy sin. Come to the Savior. Turn your eyes upon him. Oh, so are you weary and troubled? No light in the darkness you see. There's life for a brother, the Savior. And life for your mind and dead free. Turn your eyes upon Jesus. Lord, hold in his wonderful face. And the things of earth will grow strangely dim. In the might of his glory and grace. Come to the Savior. Turn your eyes upon him. He wants to give you life without death. Mercy he offers you, borned from thy sin. Come to the Savior. Turn your eyes upon him. Oh, come to Jesus' eyes now.
Thank you, ladies. Two hundred nine, if you would, before the message, two hundred nine, before Brother Johnson comes. Grace greater than our sin. When you find it, if you can, go ahead and stand. We'll sing all four verses, two and nine. Marvelous grace of our loving Lord. Grace that exceeds our sin and our guilt. Yonder on Calvary's mound abhorred. There where the blood of a lamb was spilled. Grace, grace, God's grace. Grace that will pardon and cleanse within. Grace, grace, God's grace. Grace that is greater than all our sin. Sin is fair like the sea waves fold. Grant it the soul with infinite loss. Grace that is greater, yes, grace atonement. Points to the red roof of mighty cross. Grace, grace, God's grace. Grace that will pardon and cleanse within. Grace, grace, God's grace. Grace that is greater than all our sin. Dark is the stain that we cannot hide. What can avail to wash it away? Look, there is flowing a crimson tide. Whiter than snow you may be today. Grace, grace, God's grace. Grace that will pardon and cleanse within. Grace, grace, God's grace. Grace that is greater than all our sin. Marvelous, infinite, pastless grace. Freely bestowed on all who believe. You that are longing to see his face. Will you this moment his grace receive? Grace, grace, God's grace. Grace that will pardon and cleanse within. Grace, grace, God's grace. Grace that is greater than all our sin. Thank you. Can we see Brother Johnson?
Amen. Well, it's a real joy to be back tonight at the service. Appreciate the goodness of the Lord to permit us some time, enjoy all of the good music. Trust that you've had a good day and a good restful day. And see if we can't do something about that old long-winded preacher that come in here last night and preached half the night, so I'll try to do a little better than I did last night. I tell you, I appreciate the good liberty to preach. When I'm telling you the Lord just stirred my soul, and your attentiveness to hear the word of God impresses me. It really stirs me and helps me to try to preach. I go places sometimes and preach, and it's obvious that some folks haven't had a manicure in a while because they give themselves one while you're preaching. And they study the songbooks, yet they never sing. And they try to play with the babies and don't own any of theirselves. I don't know about all of that, but I love it when folks have an interest in the word of God. It does make a difference in the preacher, and I do appreciate your prayers. Well, I don't know, I did not plan this, but I'm going to preach again tonight relevant to this matter of satisfaction. That just seems to be where the Lord has brought me to, and that seems to be everything I study and try to read and the preparation I make, it seems to come to that end. If you'll find your place in Proverbs chapter fourteen, that's where we're going to begin our lesson time tonight. Proverbs chapter fourteen, we're going to read a few verses here, and then we'll make our way to some other scripture as well. But this particular section that I want to pick out for our starting place has always been a particular interest to me. Always helps me to understand the necessity of, and I don't mean this in a proud way, but it's necessary to be right if you're going to do something. You need to be, if it's worth doing, it's worth doing right. And anything that has a specific pattern laid down, a given set of directions for the assembly or the use or whatever, I have found that most of the time, there may be a rare occasion, but I have found that most of the time, the closer you follow the directions, the more you get out of whatever it is that you're dealing with. The closer you can come to getting it put together right, the better it does, the longer it lasts, and the more that you enjoy it. I want to tell you, there's something to say about life itself when it comes to doing it right. You ought to, some people say, "Well, we're just going to live and die anyway." Yeah, but thank God we can live right. And certainly, it's good to know you can die right. But if you don't have any interest in living right, it's going to be kind of hard to die right. So need to kind of focus on that. Now, look with me here in Proverbs fourteen. Let's pick up reading in verse number eleven, and we'll read a few verses here, and then we'll examine our thought. "The house of the wicked shall be overthrown; but the tabernacle of the upright shall flourish." Let me say something right here. It doesn't take a lot of sense to understand that verse of scripture. Pretty self-explanatory, as we say. But the problem that I see we have in our day, there are a lot of folk who understand things but don't apply them. They even go so far as to say they believe those things, but they don't believe them strongly enough to feel the necessity of making it real in their own life. Well, let me go on. Verse number twelve. "There is a way which seemeth right unto a man; but the end thereof are the ways of death." That's another pretty simple-to-understand verse. "Even in laughter the heart is sorrowful; and the end of that mirth is heaviness. The backslider in heart shall be filled with his own ways." And again, notice the last part of this verse. "And a good man shall be satisfied from himself." There's that word we've been trying to focus on, that word, satisfied. And this first part of this verse talks about the backslider in heart. Now, you probably have not heard anybody say what I'm about to say. I don't place a lot of emphasis on, and I don't give a lot of credit to backslid Christians. They're just, there is so much false security that is given nowadays by the word backsliding. I want to tell you, I know something about backsliding from the general ideal. I've been, in my life, I have, years back, got cold on the Lord. Tried to do some things my way, and as I told you before, I never could get God to go along with me. I just, I tried, but He always kept me reminded of what He had done in my heart and kept me conscious of the fact that there was a purpose that He had for me. And thank God He was patient, and He was caring, yet at the same time, He was very, very thoughtful in His care of my life to correct me and to punish me for the error of my work. I've been, as old saying goes, I've been to God's woodshed. I just never, I never could get God to let me get by with stuff. I've tried some things, but there was always this foul feeling that would come over you when you had done it. And you know, you'd get out with Mom and Dad, we'd get out somewhere, and as kids, we'd get into something, and Daddy would, he would make an arrangement somewhere along the way to get your attention, and he would, his fingers looked like they were about eight inches long, and he would point at you. Say, "I got something for you when you get home, buddy." That's all it had, I knew exactly what it was. And it may not be exactly when you pull in the driveway, it may not be the time you get in the house, but somewhere not too far down the road, had an appointment that you had to settle up. I couldn't call in and counsel, counsel on him. You know, when he said, "You come," now you just got up and went. Nothing else mattered, you just went to take care, he was going to take care of business, and you was the business he was going to take care of. And I can honestly say, that's the way my heavenly Father has been. If you're bored again and say, "But the grace of God," that's the relationship you have with Him. Well, why does God beat on us, preacher? It's not a matter of God beating on us, He chastens us. He chastens every son He receives, and you're without chastisement. He said, "Then you're bastards and not sons." That's what He had to say. I didn't declare that, I just don't know what the Bible says. So there is a matter of God keeping close tabs on those who belong to Him. Now, we understand the ideal of doing things God's way, and we understand that when we get filled with our own ways, we are extremely miserable people. Folk get to where they won't even want to hang around us. We get sour in our attitude, we get, you know, we get this foul spirit about us, and we can make the folks who love us most miserable when we get out of sorts with the Lord. And that, let me just say this. The next time that you feel compelled to spend a little time all about yourself, always remember that the Bible describes you as an individual who is backslidden in heart. You, you may not have backslidden, uh, publicly, but you're backslidden in heart. Things, things are out of whack in here. And this in here is so important that when you get out of whack in here, if you're not careful, it's gonna be out of whack on the outside. When you get out of whack in here, it becomes all about you. One way to know when things are right on the inside, and one way to know that you can live a satisfied life is that time in life when it's not all about you, but it's all about Him and doing what He wants you to do, and you're satisfied apart from yourself. You don't have to have you to be happy. Everything gonna have to go your way before you can enjoy living. Somebody else might have some pretty good ideals along the way. Somebody else may make a pretty good pot of chicken noodle soup somewhere down the road. You know, there, there's just a lot of things that you could find out in life that are very pleasant experiences if you weren't so full of yourself. You're the tribe being satisfied apart from yourself sometime. It is a wonderful experience. I have not got that, preacher, I don't have it all nailed down just yet now. I, I'm working progress with comes to that. I can still be a bit selfish and, uh, uh, self-centered sometimes, but know what this Bible says. Now, uh, in our day, and especially sometimes with young folks, folks get the ideal, uh, that, that life is just a, a, a big, a bundle of hassle and confusion, and the best thing you can do is just to beat your way through, get by the best you can, step on who you have to step on, and, uh, tear down whatever you have to tear down. Uh, set your sights on the top and climb like a fool because you're all that counts. I got news for you. You are headed for a disaster. And it will be a disaster of your own making because the things you design and the house you build will fall in on you one of these days, and you will be the one that does the suffering. Now, I, I wanna, I just, just for the sake of time, I, I won't, I won't spend a lot of time with it, but I wanna go back, uh, and, and look at some things now. This, this matter of being backslidden in heart, uh, wanting everything our way and making it a point to, uh, think that our way is the best way. And, and I was praying about this earlier today. And, or, you know, the, I guess, first things first, I, I, after you come through the experience of Adam and Eve in the garden, and God settles all that issue, and He puts, uh, the serpent in His place, and, uh, tells Adam and Eve what, what they've done is going to cost them. He introduces us in chapter four to a couple of young men. One of them by the name of Abel, who was a, a, a godly man, and then one by the name of Cain, who proves to be a very ungodly man. And the mark that proves Cain to be so ungodly is simply his selfishness. He got to the place, now, I don't know, I, I, I don't, uh, they, they's varying opinions on this. I don't know how many times we, we have this one record here. I, I'm of the persuasion that this is the first time, uh, that Cain and Abel had actually done this. No doubt, they've seen, uh, Adam and Eve do it, but the day come when it was up to them, it, it, there, there came a time of personal responsibility that they were to come and they were to make an offering to the Lord. Abel comes, he brings the first one of the flock. He, he kills the animal, he makes the preparation, he, he makes the mess and, uh, the, the blood and the, uh, intrals and all. Hey, I wanna tell you, that was probably somewhat of an unpleasant sight. And I, I don't know, he, it may have been the first time that he ever done that completely by himself, I don't know. But I wanna say, though it was his first time, and though it was a hard task, it was a costly task. Abel got it right. He done it the way God said to do it. Now, and God showed publicly that He had accepted both Abel and His sacrifice, offering. Okay, Cain comes and he brings the fruit of His hands. He brings something that has God attached to it by creation. He, uh, for the sake of His religion, he wants to present His profession. He's a, a tiller of the grain. He, he, he's a gardener, he's a farmer of sorts. And he wants to try to impress God with what God has given him to survive with here in the world. But guy, hey, God didn't call on Cain to set up a display table. Uh, one, one fellow said it this way, said, "If you could have seen the display of Cain and smelled the fragrances and seen the flowers and tasted the fruit, experienced all the spices and the artistry, uh, that was on the table where Cain brought all of his stuff on that particular day." He said, he said, "Well, preacher, where can we understand some of what Cain had to offer to God?" Well, you, you can go to some bookstores and you can find some people's offering to God who have written books and they've made movies and they have, uh, fixed up computer programs and all kinds of, and they claim the fame and the, uh, the, the success of their Christian experience through a profession that they have on their earth. They think they're going to heaven because of a book they wrote or a song they wrote or something of that nature. I want, to me, that I'm, I'm not trying to be indifferent or ugly, but that's about how, what Cain had on his mind. God, God's not in the business of accepting, uh, hey, God is not in the business of accepting even things that He has enabled us to do so that we can be saved. I've always, uh, I, I, I've always enjoyed building. Uh, and I, I, I do not make a boast of it. I've, I've told this here before. Uh, God has helped me, I, I've had a, a, a pretty handy, uh, mind about reading blueprints and looking at a set of prints and a piece of ground. And I can picture in my mind the, the dirt that needs to be moved. And I can pretty well study a set of blueprints for just a few minutes and look at the cover page, and I can get a picture in my mind of what that house is going to look like when it's done. Always, I've always enjoyed that. The thicker the stack of blueprints, the more there was to figure out about it, especially the foundation, uh, and the, the basic structure of the house, that, that's always impressed me. And I've built, uh, not just by myself, but I have been a part. I've built in some, some nice homes, some big homes, some commercial structures, a few along the way. I've been involved in, in something of that nature ever since I was about seventeen or eighteen year old, uh, uh, just along the way. But hey, I, I'm not, I'm not saved because I have some carpentry skills. I'm not saved because I have some masonry skills. I'm honored that back across the years several times, God has given me the occasion to use those skills in ways that would glorify Him, but I don't have anything in the way of salvation because of what I can do with my hands. Nothing in my hand I bring simply to that cross I claim. Uh, there, there's some things here about Cain, and I got most of this, a lot of this stuff here that I'm gonna talk about, I got to have another fellow's book. And you say, "Well, I wouldn't tell it." Well, they, you know, I ain't smart enough to come up with this kinda stuff. But, uh, this, this fellow's out reading, uh, he, he said, "The first thing that Cain done was wrong." Said he preferred reasoning over revelation. Listen, the only way you can become acquainted with God, God must reveal Himself to you. You, you can, you know, there, there's some, I heard a fellow make a statement, I was listening to, uh, a message preaching coming up here the other day. And he's talking about a, a, a poet, I think the name was Emerson. He said, "One day he reached and picked a little flower off the wall, and said he made a, a statement, and he looked at that little flower and said, 'My old beauti- most beautiful flower, if I can learn everything there is to know about you, then I will know everything there is to know about God.'" Very foolish statement. The only way you'll ever know what you need to know about God, God must reveal that to you. Now, I'm not talking about, uh, imagery in the sky, I'm not talking about hearing voice. Uh, I'm talking about how that God, through His word and the work of the Holy Spirit, must manifest to you that He is God. Cain, Cain thought, "Well, I, I, I'll reason this thing out. I know what God has said, and I, I know we've got this altar down here, and they had had a good example, they knew exactly where to go, they knew exactly what to do, they knew exactly what to take with them, and Abel done that, but Cain come along, and he had reasoned it, and said, "I, I wanna try a little something different today, Abel." I could just imagine in my mind, I could hear the conversation. Abel say, "You know, Cain, uh, that's not what God said to him," except maybe Cain would say, "Yeah, but I'm, I'm gonna do such a good job, and I'm gonna put my touch on this, and I'm gonna line everything up, and by the time I get done, God's gonna accept what I'm gonna bring to Him." How many people are there? And I hope there's nobody here tonight, maybe some listening about livestream, but how many people are there who have lived their life trying to patch up this old decrepit, wicked, uh, hunk of humanity here upon this earth? They, they try to get it up on Sunday morning and put the clothes on it and, uh, get its hair in place and its teeth brushed and, uh, carry it down to a place of worship somewhere and say, "Okay, God, are you not impressed? I made it to church this morning." I don't, I don't mean to be rude. But I, I, I don't know why we would expect God to be impressed with just simple obedience. That's what God expects. That's what He told us to do. Not only is that what He told us to do, He told us how to do it. He told us to do it way for the well. He, uh, in, in, in Cain's endeavors, he, he rejected the truth of an innocent substitute. Abel came and put something between himself and God. Cain, uh, came and he put himself up against God without an innocent sacrifice. There was nothing involved to take Cain's place before God. I wanna tell you, before you can go to heaven, before you can be saved, there's gotta be something between you and God, uh, that's better than you are. You're not good enough, I'm not good enough? Well, Jesus Christ is good enough. Matter of fact, that, that's all God will accept. Cain, he, he thought he could reason, uh, with God, and it would be as effective as what God had revealed about himself. He, he preferred beauty and pageantry above blood. His angel was arrayed with all of these favorite things that he had grown, uh, no doubt the best, thinking of where they were in creation and the freshness and the fertility of the seed, the richness of the soil, and all the pleasantries that it might have been in his favor in farming, but yet still, God found no favor in that stuff at all. I'm persuaded today that some of the best singing that you might hear in the world as far as music and lyric are concerned would have nothing at all about it that would be acceptable to God. There are people who have trained voices. There are folk who, who exercise it, there, there are folk who devote their life to various kinds of music, doing their best, uh, to, to get it right and to make it impressive to those who hear. But just because you can sing, that doesn't mean you're saved. Now, I, I wanna say this carefully. There's some gospel singing that I avoid because I'm afraid I will enjoy it. Listen, the, the old song, I've heard it all my life. "I'll fly away," and praise God, "I'm going." Heard a man sing a song one time down in Oliver Springs. Uh, "I'm leaving out like, uh, uh, Santa Claus, but I'm coming back like the Lone Ranger." And, uh, "The Lord's coming, we're gonna live." I'm gonna fly away one of these days. Call it, you know, you may not like that, that's okay. But there's some folk that I really don't care anything about hearing sing that. They can sing it well, they've got, they, they've got the voice for it, they've got the music for it, they've got everything exactly right, but it is not a sacrifice of praise that's coming from a heart and clean lips unto God. And if God's not gonna accept it, I wanna be careful that I don't enjoy it. Hey, this, this stuff's gotta be, if it's gonna be done right, we gotta do it God's way. Yeah, it was, it was, as I said earlier, it was probably an ugly sight. Uh, I, I, I'd suppose maybe that Cain and, and the preparation of all of this, I, I don't know whether he went and washed himself before he done the ceremonial act or whatever he was to do before God, don't, don't know anything at all about that. But I do know this, that, that Abel, I meant Abel instead of Cain, I wanna go, but, but when Abel made his offering unto the Lord, I don't care how bloody it was, how dirty his clothes might have been, there was nothing about the giver or the offer of the gift. That God, God's attention, God's attention came to that offering that was there. Abel had something in his place on that altar. I'm glad tonight I've got something in my place on the mercy seat in heaven. I've got the blood of the Lord Jesus Christ. So, he, he not only preferred beauty over the blood, uh, of the animal that God, uh, but, uh, he, uh, he tried something new rather than trusting what God had already established. Churches across our country, uh, uh, tonight have, ha- ha- have absolutely, uh, turned to all kinds of different things for the sake of trying to maintain. Had a man tell me one time, uh, he, he, uh, of course, he's retired now, and there's, the church is still going on, uh, pretty much in the same direction. But I went by there one Wednesday, we were discussing some things about, uh, uh, the Promise Keepers movement, we were standing against that at the time. He wanted to take me through him, show me his church, and he took me in a gymnasium that had a, a mezzanine around the top of it where there was a walking track, and there was a section over here where he had a bunch of tables. And he said, "Preacher," he said, "I'll tell you where we are." He said, "We're serving supper every Wednesday evening at five thirty now, uh, and trying to, uh, keep things going." He said, "Somebody run up to me the other day and said, 'Preacher,'" said, "Why have we opened a restaurant in the church house?" He said, "Simply because we owe three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, and we gotta do something to keep people coming to church." Pretty sad. I'm not against having fellowship meals in church, that's not what I'm saying. I'm not knocking those things, I'm just telling you, there is no substitute for our presence and worship apart from what God has told us that He would accept. He believed the feelings were more important than the facts. And it wasn't somebody else's feelings he was interested in. He wanted to do something that would make him feel good about how God felt about him. Cain might have wanted his name on a plaque somewhere. He might, the, the steps maybe that went up to the altar, he might have wanted, uh, his side, Abel's side, might have had blood droppings and hair and, uh, stuff on it where he done his, uh, offering work before the where he done his offering work before the Lord. And Cain's side, he might have wanted to keep all that fire over on the other side and keep all of that off. Hey, I want my side to be clean. I don't want anything here that would be repulsive. See, I want to feel good about where I go worship. See, your feelings don't mean nothing to God. What means something to God is that you know what the facts are about worship and you do it the way God said to do it. I mean, Cain might have said, "I don't really understand God's dissatisfaction. After all, I done what God's just said to bring an offering. I just decided to make a few improvements in the thing." No, we don't, we don't do it just like they used to, but we're in the same place and it's the same general idea. Listen, there is no substitute for facts. No substitute for facts. See, Cain's way of doing things left out the payment process. See, that animal became guilty for Abel. And that animal paid the price to satisfy God for Abel. There was nothing on Cain's side to pay the... Cain's corn and beans and cucumbers or whatever he might have had, all of that brought attention to Cain. Now, let me, let me give you this last of these, I'm gonna move on. Now, something else about Cain. He rather persecute than be persuaded. He's like these abortion doctors. Cain was too caring to kill an innocent animal, but didn't bother him beating brother to death. You know, what, they go in these abortion clinics and, you know, they just think it's extremely unfair for a young lady to give birth to a child when she's still in her teens and her life being marred with that little snotty-nosed baby all the time. We gotta give her a better chance at life. She doesn't deserve this. And to kill that little baby? That's Cain's way. See, Cain, oh my, Cain was more in favor of murder than he was obedience. Cain tried to satisfy God's demand. He wouldn't bring a calf or a lamb or whatever, but he killed his brother. Well, he killed his brother and, uh... Let me say, always remember, God was close enough to hear when Abel died. And He was close enough to talk to Cain directly about what he had done. Listen, "God help me, God help us, God help all of us to recognize the fact that no matter what we do, no matter where we do it or when we do it, God is close enough to know what's going on." God doesn't forget. You know, a couple of other things here. This matter of backsliding, just going away. Cain knew what to do, but we're gonna call him the first lost backslider. When we think about God's way compared with Cain's way, Cain had no substitute for himself before God. Listen, we need to always remember, there is no substitute for the truth. Only the truth makes a difference. The only thing God accepts is truth. That's all God accepts. That's all He'll take. Then God's way of redemption has always been the blood. You compare that with what Cain, Cain's first time to the altar, he tried to take something contrary to what God said to bring. God had established that. God still hasn't changed that today. That sacrifice had to be cleaned. It had to be killed and it had to be offered. And Cain avoided every bit of that and thought that what he could do with his hands would be better than what God said. You better never forget, God's ways are important. God's ways never change. Malachi 3:6, he said, "I am the Lord and I change not." Said, "Therefore, you sons of Jacob are not consumed." Hebrews 13:8, "Jesus Christ the same yesterday and today and forever." Cain tried to start something new. He tried to make an adjustment on the original way of truth and it did not work in Cain's day. And there's so many people in our day who are still trying to do it their way rather than do it God. And you know, a lot of them will tell you they're trying to do it their way. A lot of them will just look you in the face, preacher, and say, "I know, I know what the Bible says, but that's a little old fashioned. I believe that's, you know..." I've had people tell me, "Well, preacher, I believe God expects us to be up with the times." I'm interested in being up with the times. I want to stay with the truth. The truth is settled forever in heaven. Time is fading. There will be a day, if you're born again and saved, we're going to see a day when time will be no more. We'll never see a day when truth will cease to exist. The truth of a burning hell will be recognized a million years from now in the very hell that God made for the devil and his angels. There'll never be a time when the truth of hell will vanish away. There'll never be the time when the truth of God's word about a blood sacrifice for sin will ever go away. Hey, all of these truths will stand and they will stand for eternity, whether you die and go to heaven or you die and go to hell. The truth is always going to be there. Think of making a mistake so bad that the consequences would never be lived down. I've made some mistakes that bothered me. I've said some things I'd give anything in vain to set them. Some of them were right, but they weren't necessary. They weren't edifying. They didn't edify the saints. They didn't glorify the Savior. They didn't strengthen the church. All they were, just my own personal opinion. And once in a while, it comes back to me and I find myself, God, saying, "God, please forgive me for that." Find myself, Holy Ghost will bring things to my mind and I repent of those things if He brings them to my mind. See, always hadn't done, but there's gonna be a day when a mistake's gonna be gone. If you die without Jesus Christ, you're making a mistake you'll never forget. You're turning, you're turning something down that you won't find anything to replace it with. You might pass the last gas station on the interstate exit somewhere where gas is $2.99 and you say, "Boy, that's probably the last time I'll buy gas for that price." And sure enough, the next 15 exits, it's $3.09. But then the 11th or 16th or whatever you get to, you might find it for $2.97. You rejoice, "Boy, praise God, I got some cheap gas." Hey, if you don't fix things with your soul and do it God's way, there won't be another exit at any price. There won't be another opportunity at any time if you don't do it God's way. Cain's way was feelings and presentation. It was all about him. But God's way is faith. Without faith, Hebrews 11 says, "It's impossible to please God, for he that cometh to him must believe that he is and that he is a just reward of them that diligently seek him." Cain exercised no faith. Cain forgot that we was all guilty regardless. I don't know. I don't know that I could look and tell the difference in Cain and Abel. Don't know what their statute was or anything of that nature. There's one place you can tell the difference. You could tell the difference when God was around. A lot of folk put on a good front. There's gonna be a day when what you've got to offer is gonna be all you got and it's gotta be somebody else. Yeah, let me, let me move along. I'm trying to get done. I think of another fellow who was filled with his own ways in the book of Ruth. I'm passing over a lot of stuff for the sake of time. But in Ruth chapter 1, we know it was a time when everybody was doing that which was right in their own eyes. Well, that's the world we live in today. There was a fellow there by the name of Elimelech who'd done what was right in his own eyes, and he was a godly man. Now, as I think about Elimelech, Elimelech, he failed when facing hard times. In the hard times that Elimelech faced, see, his name means, "My God is King." He was living in Bethlehem Judah, which is the house of bread and praise. Why would the subject of famine bother him? Who he was, should have had, the God that he served, he should have known God would take care of him. Seen a fellow's commentary a while back looking at this. And he said, "If you don't think Elimelech could have been better off to stay in Bethlehem Judah." Now, I understand the story of Ruth. I understand that completely. But what about Boaz? Who you reckon come out better, Elimelech or Boaz? I don't, and I'm not gonna argue with you. Some people say, "Well, that was all in the providence." And I understand the providence of God. But God could have, I believe, in his providence, I believe God could have got a Ruth to Bethlehem Judah without Elimelech dying of failure. Well, that may be the cannonball that sinks a ship, but I don't believe that. See, the cause of Elimelech's backsliding was because he faced some hard times. I think there's 13 or 14 different famines that are mentioned basically in the Old Testament scripture. I don't, I don't really know just how up on famines that Elimelech might have been, but God knew about them. God knew the ones that were coming and He knew how intense they were gonna be. And He even knew, I mean, there was a day when God knew there was corn in Egypt and He took care of Jacob's family through that. We're not any different to that. God takes care of His people. The cause of his backsliding, they got down there, hadn't been there long. I guess they'd found a place to live somewhere and kinda got set up. And I don't know what all the circumstances were, but the Bible makes it clear they wasn't down there very long. Just a few short verses in the chapter, the first chapter of the book of Ruth you find that Elimelech died. And I don't know, but just somehow it just kinda sticks in my mind, Brother Mark. If he had stayed in Bethlehem Judah and the famine hadn't have been strong, he wouldn't have, he wouldn't have started to death, that's a... He could have, you know, he could have probably, them two boys that died just a little while down the road, they could have probably lived all a little while. You know, it'd take you longer to start it than you think you will. Hey, some of us could, you know, well, we won't get on how long we can fast. We'll just pass that over pretty quick. But, you know, a lot of times we get so concerned about the potential of difficulty that we forget about the promises of the Master. Think about the course of his backsliding. Got filled with his own ways because of hard... A lot of different things can happen to you that cause you to be filled with your own ways. And I will admit this, hard times do have a way of causing industrious people to depend on themselves a little more than the norm. Man loves his family, wants to take care of them. He sees hard times coming. He know, I mean, you don't have to wonder whether winter's gonna come or not. The man makes preparation. He gets wood or coal or gets his furnace cleaned and checked out and gets ready to the time when he gets cold up. He can flip the thermostat on and he's got heat. He wants his kids to be warm, wants his wife to be warm, wants the house warm, wants all those things in place and wants them taken care of. And we're not careful. We can get to the place or get ahead of God with some of that stuff. Not saying be negligent, but we'll say this. You better really be careful when you do things for the sake of security that hinder you and your family spiritually. Three graves in Moab. And one widow woman and a widow daughter-in-law. Going back into town and somebody says, "Hey, here comes the helmet." She said, "Call me not nail me. Call me Myra." She said, "Howling, I'm full. The Lord hath brought me home again empty." The consequences of being filled with their own ways. This, this text here in Proverbs, and I'm nearly done. When I look at these verses here, there's two or three things that really stick out to me. You'll notice back over here, let me, let me get back over here to our text right quick. In Proverbs 14, a couple of things I want to point out here. "That way that seemed right unto a man, the end thereof are the ways of death." Those situations exist, both with righteous people and unrighteous people. Saved or unsaved, nobody gets around God's way. About this man filled with his own ways. "This seemed right way. It may be a time, while, when laughter may appear on the outside, but sorrow grips the heart on the inside so much so that as he begins to recognize the fact that he's gotten away from what the right way actually is, there's much sorrow." Wade, he might laugh and put up a good front, but somewhere along the way, the truth's gonna come out. This just man, this right individual that's doing things right and he's satisfied with God and satisfied with this good man. He's satisfied from himself. He doesn't say that he's not a wise or a caring or an understanding man, but it just simply says that he's managed, got enough sense to understand that his sufficiency is of the Lord. You'll never figure it out. I'll never get it all figured out. And I'll make more mistakes trying to put together what I get figured out than I would have made if I'd just waited on God and let Him take care of it. There's, there's an application relevant to material things here. But the saddest of all is there's a way, there was a way that seemed right to Cain. What turned out? There was a way that seemed right to Elimelech, but what come out of that? There was a way that seemed right to Elimelech, but what come out of that? What seems right to you about salvation of your soul? Have you got something that God thinks more of than what He thought of what Cain had? Are you listening to God close enough, even as a saved person? That though, see, see, in fleeing in difficult times, we, we fail sometimes to understand, uh, that, that, that in those, that, that those dark, those areas that seem so dark and so incredibly dangerous, we fail to understand, you know, we don't always have to flee. God can take care of us where we are. And if it's necessary for you to go somewhere, God can tell you where to go. Mary and Joseph, little baby Jesus. God sent words, said, "You take that boy," and He moved him around, put him wherever He needed to be. And I, I don't, I won't take time to go into, but there's a lot of places in the scripture where the word of the Lord came to various people, told them to say things, told them to do things, told them to go places, and told them to, sometimes not to go anywhere, told them to pray, told them not to pray. Just as sure as there's a word from God, uh, in this Bible, there's a word from God for you in this Bible as well. A word from God about your salvation. I, I wonder, how, how do you feel about the way that, that you really understand that you're gonna have to come to God, and you're gonna have to repent of your sins, and you're gonna have to trust Him for the salvator, your good do's and don'ts, uh, all of those things, none of those things are ever gonna work. Nobody is in heaven tonight because they got it all right. There's nobody in heaven tonight because they perfectly kept the Ten Commandments. But I'm going to heaven tonight on the credibility of one who did keep the Ten Commandments. I'm going to heaven tonight on the credibility of one who kept all the commandments and never offended in one point. There was no ghoul found in his mouth. He was separate from sinners, holy and heartless. If you're gonna go, that's the only way to go. Say, preacher, I'm gonna take my chances. I wouldn't try that. I'd find me a place here somewhere. You could do it where you are, wherever you are. And I'd get talking to God. And I'd ask God to save me, and I'd accept His gift of salvation. Be speaking to your heart, so God deal with you about your need. I'll be saying, "Your Father, we love you, thank you for loving us. Thank you for this time that you blessed us with this evening. Thank you for the good liberty to preach and the good presence of the Spirit intended to the folk that are sitting here. Lord, each night, it's, it's been tremendous, uh, the, the clarity that the Spirit of God has given, uh, to try to preach with, and I pray you'll use it and make it real to hearts, only you can do that. I pray you'll help the preacher, Brother Mark, whichever one comes, give them direction in the further to the service. We'll thank you for what you do for us in Christ's name. Amen.